Welcome to the May 10, 2010 work session. Work sessions are more formal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken. Tonight we've got two items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that it's germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city court staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public call, comment cards will be accepted. Now, I think we may have some just general public comments.
Yes, sir. We have five general public comments.
So, it's okay with the council. I'm gonna break away and allow those people to give their general public comments. Yeah, that's up to you.
Okay.
I forgot a note from everybody that are here. Okay, let's hear general public comments.
Okay. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes for your comment. The clock on the left is two minutes. Francia Linden.
Hi. My name is Francia Linden. I live at 14810 East Bluff Road in Milton. I was here last week and listened to the sewer discussion, and when the vote was taken on not accepting the judge's mediated settlement, I was totally thrown off and puzzled by it because one of the reasons for not accepting the judge's recommendation was that the city was pretty tired of litigating this topic and wanted it to be over with. But it seems to me that adhering to the judge's recommendation would have given you legal standing to reject or accept applications for sewer down the road. It would have given you a legal basis to defend a no sewer position. So, if you really wanted to eliminate continuing litigation, it seems to me the best way to have done that would have been to accept the judge's recommendation. So, I don't, really don't understand how you came to that conclusion that all eight parcels should have been accepted and ignored the mediated settlement.
Our next public comment comes from Carol Lane.
My name is Carol Lane. My address is 14890 East Bluff Road, Milton, Georgia. A letter was written by the Honorable Judge Norman Fletcher enclosed with a map that was sent to Ken Gerard, the City of Milton attorney, and Vincent D. Hyman, Fulton County attorney, dated March 16th, 2010, with respect to the Fulton County Service Delivery Strategy mediation. The judge wrote, and I quote, "In accordance with my inherent authority as court-appointed mediator, I hereby strongly urge the governing authority of City of Milton to vote to approve or reject the enclosed sewer map. My recommendation is that the City of Milton provides an up or down vote with respect to the sewer map enclosed. As of today, the City of Milton has not abated by the court's recommendation. The judge dated the city has until May 14th, 2010, to vote. I am requesting the City of Milton do just that and follow the judge's recommendation. To do otherwise is a waste of the taxpayers' money. Why did the city go into mediation if they are not going to follow the judge's order? The city attorney had 43 business days to send an answer to the judge. My question to you is why wasn't the letter and map made public to the citizens of Milton? Fulton County made the letter public. It was a question of whether, if it was a question whether the judge would allow it to be public. The city attorney had 33 business days from March 16th to May 3rd to ask. The city attorney also stated it was urgent to vote May 3rd to meet the deadline. That was not so urgent since she had 43 business days to vote. As a citizen, I would hope that the City of Milton believes in transparent government. It is, this, in this incident, I believe the citizens were denied transparency on this very critical issue. My request is a special meeting and take a revote following the judge's recommendation concerning the map. This precedent has been established. A revote was taken per Mayor Lott's request February 2nd, 2010, concerning a vote on December 15th, 2008. Thank you."
Our next public comment comes from Kurt Nolte.
My name is Kurt Nolte, 825 Dockbridge Way in Milton, Georgia, and thank you for this opportunity. I just felt compelled to speak after being here last week. You know, when it comes to sewer, you know, the City of Milton, I think, has been pretty clear on what we expected. If you go back to 2008, those that were, you know, attending the meetings, you know, remember the emotionally packed, you know, council meetings we had, and the passion around the increased access to sewer hasn't gone away. And I do believe that there was proper notice to the meeting last week that, you know, the council was going to be voting in favor of the map they voted against in 2008. You would have seen that same passion. The citizens of Milton, again, as I say, have spoken very clearly about the sewer issue. One example is in the 2008 CPAC Citizen Questionnaire, where 87% of those Milton residents that did respond, responded that they do not want nor need additional sewer service in Milton. Public awareness is one of the main reasons increasing sewer did not pass in 2008 and now in 2010 through what I see as a set of well-orchestrated events to limit public involvement in this topic. You were able to completely reverse your decision. As the City of Milton taxpayer, I cannot believe all the city resources and tax dollars you have simply wasted by reversing your decision and accepting the sewer map that Fulton County asked for in 2008. One of the rationalizations for increasing sewer access to additional 150 acres last week was it would end the sewer debate with Fulton County once and for all by fulfilling any and all sewer obligations, real or perceived, that the city inherited. Therefore, I agree it's time to stop wasting any more tax papers and money on the sewer issue, and I'm asking the Milton City Council to consider placing a moratorium on allowing any more parcels within the City of Milton to be added to the sewer for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Laura Bentley.
Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment tonight. I missed the public comment last Monday, so I did want to just voice my dissatisfaction with the lack of information that was shared with the public. That letter would have been very helpful, and I think the public would have been here. The lack of notice of the map. We do know that in the CPAC survey, many, many people want us to uphold our sewer policy. And I, after watching what took place here last Monday night, that wasn't, that didn't And we've stood firm on it for so long, so it, just to get something over with, to get it done, that seems like a big waste of taxpayer dollars. I want to thank council members Hewitt, Tartt, and Zoner Bailey for voting for at least the way my family feels. We live here, we cherish our lifestyle, and we want it to remain the same. And so, with that, I would ask you to consider in the future adhering strictly to the process of letting the public know what's happening on an issue that is so important. Thank you.
Our final comment comes from Kim Horn.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. My name is Kim Horn. I live at 415 Wade Glen Court, and once again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My comments center around much of what has already been said of the meeting from what I witnessed last week at the meeting. In my opinion, this is just my opinion, the actions that were taken were, by the majority of the council, were quite disappointing, to put it mildly. The City of Milton officials have let the citizens down, and I'm here tonight to ask you to look at and investigate remedying the situation. A revote has been taken in the past with full public knowledge. I think that the citizens should be allowed to speak their minds. You know, also said before me was the question of legality of the vote. You know, we moved away from Fulton County so that we would have transparent and open government. What we witnessed last Monday was far from that. We had asked for the information, it was not provided. Then we find, and then I go and find out Tuesday morning that it's been on the Fulton County website the entire time. Why would Fulton County be allowed to put something out there that we weren't? One other question of legality, I'm not an attorney, but in some reading that I've done, there's a question of violation of duty of loyalty. The City of Milton Council has taken an oath to faithfully uphold and execute their duties of supporting the previously stated position, and that being the one of the 2008 vote for the four to three to approve the sewer map. Why was there a request to go above and beyond what the judge's mediation had suggested? No one gave that, other than the fact that sewer should be given to anyone that asks for it. So, you know, if I come before you and ask for sewer just because my neighbor has sewer, I guess I'm gonna get it, you know, without any input from anybody else. I don't think that's right, and I don't think the rest of our citizens know it's right. And I don't think that most of our citizens even know what's happened. It hasn't been in the paper, it hasn't been publicized. The only thing that was sent out was the, you know, the thing that the City of Milton sends out that says it was a wrap-up. I am extremely disappointed in the actions, and I would like to see total transparency brought forth. Last week, there was urgency in taking the vote, but the question is, was the mediation, as I asked last week, was the mediation letter a legal binding document requiring you to vote? The way I read the letter was it was a suggestion urging you to vote either up or down on the judge's mediation. It didn't ask for you to go above and beyond the mediation.
Time, please.
So, I would request that those things be looked into and that we have full public review and public comment of this agenda. Thank you.
The only thing, and I'm not going to open this up since this is not an agenda item for discussion, but I appreciate everyone's public comments. The only statement I'd like to make is that whether you agree or disagree, this was a legal issue. It was litigation with Fulton County, and it was handled to the letter of the law with our city attorney and our staff. And we actually put it off a week. They did put it off a week so that people would have time for notice. It was put on the agenda before, it was even discussed before the council saw it, so it couldn't have been, the information couldn't be public then. But the good news is that we now truly do have a map we can follow. So, we do now have a sewer plan that Milton can follow, and we can draw the line. So, whether you disagree or agree, at least we're there now. So, before, it was all up in the air, and I'm pleased that we have that. As far as the judge's decision to take four properties out of eight, that was kind of a random thing, hey, split the difference, but I don't know who wants to, I don't believe anybody up here wants to split up the eight and say, you know, you four people get it and you four people don't that we're supposed to. We had motions to deny it totally, and we had a motion to accept Fulton County's map totally, so I don't believe we had any motions in between. Anyways, moving on, city clerk, please call the first item.
First item is discussion on concept plans for intersection of State Route 372, New Providence Road, and State Route 140, New Providence Road, presented by Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Mayor, council, before I turn this over to our consultants from Street Smarts to go through this plan and schedule with you, I just wanted to let you know that these two concept plans that we're presenting tonight are the result of three meetings with our Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as a public information open house that was held by GDOT last month. As a result of that open house, I'll tell you that the comments that we got back from that were overwhelmingly in support of the concept plans. We had about 45 comments submitted, 41 comments submitted, 33 of which were in favor, four conditionally in favor, or conditional answers, and only one was opposed. A few had no responses, and the one that was opposed had a comment regarding installation of sidewalks, so not necessarily in relation to the intersection improvements themselves. So, a lot of positive response on both of these intersections. Lot of work on behalf of the CAC, and I guess I'd like to, before Street Smarts gets going, I'd like to thank the committee members that served on that committee, a few of which are here tonight. But our committee consisted of Wilson Borden, Yvonne Latour, Kathy Ray, Star Voit, Brad Robinson, Mike Stevens, and Kevin O'Sullivan. So, a lot of work from them, as well as our consultants. So, I guess I'll turn it over to Street Smarts, to Erica. She'll get us started, going through the concepts with you, where we are, and where we will be going with this from this point forward.
Hi, good evening. I'm Erica Becker with Street Smarts, and I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the public involvement process that we had. Carter told you a little bit about our meeting, but just to give you a little more detail, we had three citizen advisory committee meetings. The first meeting was to give everybody an overview of the two projects, talk about project constraints, and then to also hear some ideas from the committee. That was in January. The second meeting that we had was in February, where we discussed a little more in detail the ideas that everybody presented, things that would work, things that wouldn't work, and why those outcomes were reached. Our third meeting was in March, and that was to focus on one alternative for each location. Carrie, our design engineer, is gonna give you a little more detail, but the outcomes from that were at 140, a signalized intersection, and then at Birmingham Highway, a roundabout. The next item that we had was, of course, our PIOH, and as Carter said, we had a really good turnout, a lot of support, especially for the roundabout. People were very excited to see that, which was good news, 'cause, you know, sometimes the roundabouts, people can get a little nervous with those, but everybody was very supportive and excited to see that in their community. There was one citizen that had an issue with how the roundabout on Birmingham Highway would impact her property, but we've taken a look at that design and resolved that, and Carrie can go into more detail about that with you. So, that will hopefully alleviate that citizen's concern. Another comment that we heard a lot, even in the supporting comments that were sent in, was people were really excited about this, and they wanted it to move as quickly as possible, which I know Carter and we are working on to move this along as quickly as we can. It, of course, is under state funding, so you have to follow their PDP process, but following that, we're trying to move that along as quickly as possible. Another thing that we have that has worked very well in keeping the public informed is a project website. If you have a chance, it's MiltonIntersectionProjects.com, and that has all of our meeting minutes, our agendas from the CAC meetings. It also has some of the simulations that we presented at the citizen advisory committee meetings and at the PIOH. So, now I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie Ward, and she'll give you some detail on both of the alternatives.
We basically started out with the 2006 approved concept report from Fulton County, and that approved concept for first intersection I'll discuss is the Arnold Mill Intersection. At the Arnold Mill Intersection, there were three alternatives previously considered. The first alternative was to move the, realign the road in such a way that it wouldn't have a 70-degree skew angle that it has now. It's the, I believe it's 25-degree skew, and we're proposing to correct that skew by realigning it 90 degrees to the intersection. We're also proposing a signal there. The other alternative considered was moving it 700 feet to the west, which would be located behind the fire station, and because of right-of-way impacts, that was ruled out. And the third alternative was no build. Based on the traffic analysis, the traffic signal is still warranted at this intersection, and we've coordinated with GDOT, and their recommendation is rather than redo a concept, we're gonna go with a revised concept report for this exhibit. So, we're pretty much going with what was proposed in the previous concept report, which is a signalized intersection, which is shown here. The second concept was a little bit more detailed. We had to look at this more from the roundabout standpoint, because in that concept report, they also had three alternatives considered, four alternatives. The first alternative at the Birmingham intersection was to realign the intersection 500 feet to the north with a signal. The second alternative was rather than a signal, have a roundabout. And then the third, sorry.
Was it not up there?
Not the roundabout, we're on Providence still.
Okay. And then the third alternative was to have the signal with a reduced speed, and the fourth alternative was no build. Based on our traffic analysis, a signal was no longer warranted at this intersection. So, then we started to investigate the roundabout alternative. What was presented at the PIOH, as mentioned by Erica, we had one comment by a citizen that the impacts to her property was questionable. So, the alternative that's shown here is the revision to what was shown at the PIOH. And I guess I can point out the difference.
Pretty much, in this location... You grab the microphone. Is this the old one that we've done on our screen? You've got the one that was presented at the public information on the screen. This is the latest one, that's just been completed. This is the latest one that's just been completed. I didn't have the digital version yet, but up there.
To my left here, this is the exhibit where we had impacts to this property here. And this exhibit was based on these two being the critical properties, so we kind of had an equal distance of impacts. But we went back to look at that alignment. If we were to shift to the north a little bit, we still have impacts here, but we were able to completely come off of this parcel here. So this is the alternative that is the best fit right now. And so this is what we'd like to go forward with the concept report, based on comments that you may have.
We've got a meeting next week with GDOT to kind of go through these concept plans and get their final buy-off on the concepts. So what we're hoping for tonight is to get any feedback from Mayor and Council, positive, negative, that we can take forward to that meeting and provide to GDOT.
One question. As you stated, that on this Birmingham intersection, that a signal was not warranted, what's the reason why there wouldn't be a signal versus the roundabout?
Well...
Does that count?
It was based on, I have, I don't have the full version of the traffic study with me, but I have an email from the traffic engineer, and the email reads, "As with the signalized intersection capacity analysis..." That might not be it.
I'm Andy Anderson. I'm also with Street Smarts. The reason that the signal was not warranted now is, in the last couple of years, the signal warrants have changed. They now require a higher level of traffic. The safety levels have changed. So what warranted a signal back in 2006 does not warrant a signal in 2010. And right now, Georgia DOT is really pushing for roundabouts. If you cannot show that a signal meets virtually every requirement or every warrant, they're going to make you look at, or want you to look at, a roundabout, because of the maintenance cost savings, the safety issue with the roundabout that you, you know. What you forget is, when you put a signal in, for the first few months, you're going to actually increase the number of accidents there, just from, you know, that expectation. You know, the traveler's not, you know, looking for that signal. So with a roundabout, your speeds are greatly reduced. You may not reduce the number of accidents, but you will greatly reduce the severity of those accidents, where, you know, you may have a 15 mile an hour side swipe instead of a 50 mile an hour head-on collision. So that's where, you know, the roundabouts really, you know, you get your bang for your buck, is in the safety, in a lot of cases, the construction cost, and the ongoing maintenance cost. And that's one reason with the funding so tight that Georgia DOT is looking at roundabouts much more now.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I think the question that I'm asked most often is timeline. Has, is the fact that with the Arnold Mill was pretty much going with a very similar concept of what has already been looked at, will that help speed things up?
I would like to say yes.
Is that too logical of a...
That may be too logical, but the true answer is that both of these projects are slated for, to go to construction the end of 2012. That's if they continue to move without any disruptions along the way. We don't anticipate that. We've tried to head off any of those interruptions. We've had several meetings with Georgia DOT, just keeping them, you know, in the loop to make sure they're okay with what we do. Now, as Carter said, we do have a meeting with Georgia DOT next week, and, you know, we assume that they will, you know, agree to what we've shown, since we've kept them in the loop. We don't expect any, you know, surprises. Thank you.
I understand that the concept plans, at least in the kind of work that I do, is this concept plan, if these concept plans incorporate an actual on-the-ground survey?
Well, the, actually, since they were both older concept plans, they're already done, we were able to take a lot of the database associated with that and generate very accurate construction limits for both of these. So, you know, it may change a little bit between concept and build-out our final plans, but we do not think that, you know, that's going to be, the changes are not going to be much.
Well, I'm more concerned with vertical rather than horizontal control, and particularly the vertical curve that's south of Providence Road on Birmingham Highway.
Yeah, that curve is coming down. We looked at it to meet a 40 mile an hour speed design, which we will actually be reducing the speed coming up to the roundabout. It will have to cut that crest down about two feet.
That's all.
I mean, we may cut it down more, but to meet the letter of design, two foot is what's going to be required.
And you also get some benefit in the latest concept design of moving that intersection a little bit further north to increase that site distance.
Right. Yeah, your site distance will be increased just from shifting it 250 foot.
That's an improvement. Good job.
Just thank you, Mayor. One, I just wanted to say thank you. I applaud the use of roundabouts within Milton. I've been a proponent of them for a long time, so it's terrific that the DOT is supportive of them. I sure appreciate your efforts at Street Smart, and appreciate Carter and all of his leadership with this. One, I too would commend the shift so that we can mitigate the impact of that one property owner. Having been at that meeting, obviously, even beyond the 41 comments, there were lots and lots of folks there that were, as has already been demonstrated, very supportive of this concept plan. Obviously, expediting is always the public's concern, and as they voiced, how quickly can we get it done? I think Carter and I both spoke with the folks from DOT that evening, and they seemed very responsive to do whatever could be done without setting false expectations about trying to speed that up. So just thank you for your collective efforts. Obviously, the sooner that we can get that moving, the better, obviously for safety and for traffic calming. And I just hope that we'll see more roundabouts as we continue to look at different intersections. But thank you very much. And obviously, expediting Arnold Mill and New Providence is equally as important. I do think that several of the citizens' comments had to do with, well, if one's going to take longer, does that necessarily impact the other? And I think it was important to communicate, and hopefully will continue to communicate, that one is not dependent on the other. They obviously can move forward independent of one another. And I think also being able to proactively demonstrate, maybe even tonight as we talk about our budget, that obviously our budget of dollars are there. It's that we're highly dependent, if you will, on the Georgia DOT for these two particular projects, because they're state highways. But thank you.
Right now, if I could say that both projects are moving along with the same environmental document. If we get any inkling of a slight delay with one or the other, we will separate the two, and they will move independently of each other.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
How soon will we have a small copy that we can get to my neighbors that are emailing me on a regular basis?
We can email that copy tomorrow morning.
That would be great.
So we'll send it to...
I can email it while we're here.
No, he doesn't have it yet. It's the old one.
We haven't gotten it.
Oh, you don't have the new one?
Right. All right, this was hot off the presses about three hours ago.
Would there be benefit to holding that until after our concept meeting with GDOT next week to incorporate any concepts or comments that they may have?
We could. I mean, that's...
Meeting's next Wednesday. We can go either way, but just be aware that GDOT could say almost anything and make comments, but...
I've been doing this for 23 years, and I will say that the public involvement meeting was the most in favor, one-sidedly, that I have ever experienced. And surely, you know, we have addressed the comments, and we can keep DOT on track, on point.
And I'd like to get a copy of the two neighbors of mine that are specifically affected, because they were very concerned about not even having an acre bought and had their subject taken.
Okay.
Thank you. And I did just want to say, I realize that 2012 seems like a long way away. Hopefully, it'll get under construction even sooner. But knowing that there are some folks that still, while they embrace roundabouts, who are still hesitant as to whether or not they can learn to drive them, I'm convinced that George and myself, I'm convinced we can do it, having been and experienced these all around the world. I just wanted to ask them, from a public safety perspective, if we can, the sooner we can embrace our young people and citizens in training, and thinking about what sort of training we would have, and I realize it's, you know, still two years out, but I would just like to propose, and we've talked about this with regards to public safety and driving in other environments, I'd really like to have public safety, maybe we can have a separate meeting, where we can talk about what can we do to lever some of the experience with our officers, and maybe some opportunities on Saturdays to have driving, and then some training opportunities for young people, as well as others, not just on roundabouts, but as it relates to our roadways, and I'd hope that we don't have to wait two years to maybe have that dialogue. So just as an aside, I'd love to talk about that, because with you and with public safety, as to what we can do proactively, globally.
I think you're right. I think a lot of people who have driven roundabouts, it automatically scares them, and they'll find that once they've done it, it's much better than trying to guard across that intersection and say a prayer real quick.
For your benefit, we did the first state-funded roundabout in Georgia, for Georgia DOT, back in 2006. It's actually just up 400 at the North Georgia Outlet Mall. You know, if you ever have some time or up in that area, it's the south intersection, it's Dawson Forest. It sits back on the back, the southeast corner of the Outlet Mall, one block off 400. That's been, I think, in service since late 2006, early 2007, so that is truly one, you know, that was a state-funded roundabout.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, if these intersections go on, would be really wonderful, because, you know, since we've become a city that's been one of the hot topics that people are interested in approving these intersections, and these are definitely the worst, at least the worst two, although we have several more important. Carter, do you need anything else?
No, sir, that's fine, thank you.
Next item is discussion on mid-year budget amendment for fiscal year 2010. Ms. Stacey Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The document that I presented to you last week has changed. As I mentioned, it's a living document, and will likely change a couple times before it's approved. I'll mention what the changes are as we go through the document, but just to note, instead of having an increase in the budget of $6.8 million, it's decreased now to $6.3 million. And that is mainly because of revenues. Since revenues are up first, I'll go ahead and talk about those. The main reason for revenue amendments is basically to bring the revenues in line with what has actually occurred this year. Since last year, the taxes were billed two months later than they normally are. A lot of the revenue collections for 2009 taxes happened in fiscal year 2010. Well, we didn't anticipate that whenever we went through and adopted the budget, and so instead of getting, I believe we anticipated $1.2 million in real property, prior year property taxes, we actually have, we're anticipating $6.7 million of collections in this fiscal year. So that's the main reason why. There's real property, prior year taxes, and personal property, prior year taxes, that we've had to increase.
Are we expecting the $6.7 million, or a total of $7.9, or an increase of $6.7?
Sorry, you're right. It's a... It's a total of $7.9 million, sorry. It's an increase of $6.7 million. Thank you for pointing that out.
And how much was received for prior year and prior year?
How much was received for prior year and prior year?
Yeah.
Last year?
Yeah, some of last year's we actually received last year.
My computer's shut down on me. Give me just a second. So you want to know how much we actually received last year in 2009 for the 2009 taxes? We received $1.19, oh, one, sorry, $1.1 million. And please feel free to interrupt me at any time to ask any questions. I don't mind at all. So those were the main reasons for a lot of the adjustments, the increases in property, in revenues, is because of property taxes. And if the public wants to keep up, we do have some copies of the budget amendments over there on the counter, if you haven't already picked one up. The changes that have been made from last week to this week is mainly a decrease in current year property taxes of $520,000. We received a letter from Fulton County concerning this year's property taxes, saying that there were $180,000 reassessment notices sent out all over Fulton County. And that, with given that news, and coupled with the economic conditions that we are currently facing right now, we decided just to play it a little safe and decrease the current year property taxes downward a little bit. We have room to do that right now, and I think that it would be wise to go ahead and do that. We are actually really doing really well with property tax collections. I don't know if you've been reading, a lot of the Milton Gallots have been coming out, but, you know, we're at 99%, 99.8% of collections in 2007, 90, I think it was 98% in 2008, and then we're about 96% in 2009. We have another tax sale coming up in June. We've already received a lot of payments for those, for the advertised properties. So, you know, we anticipate that because of the tax sales and, you know, how we're moving forward with this collection method, we are able to increase our tax collections.
Thank you, Stacey. Last year, I recall that we had given a reprieve, just a delay in some of the collections, to try to help, obviously, those that were impacted by multiple properties, especially those in the development community. I'm assuming that that was helpful, that was well received, and I know that it was not well received.
We had very, very, very little response from that, honestly. And, I mean, off the top of my head, I can't even think of how many we had. I could probably count on two hands. Yeah. It was very little.
For those that took advantage of it, I'm assuming that that was helpful.
It was helpful for the few that took advantage of it.
For those that did, I'm assuming that they obviously understood that timeframe and have since submitted their funds, so that's all.
We sent notices out and everything.
Great, thank you.
So a couple of other adjustments that I mentioned in the budget document itself, just so you understand what's going on, is in motor vehicle tax collections, we did decrease that, $50,000. That was on last two weeks' budget amendment as well. That's just because of the declining trend that we're facing right now, and I don't know what's happening there. I don't know if people just aren't paying their motor vehicle taxes like they were the prior year, but based on how everything's trending, we're seeing just a downward trend in that, and we are decreasing that by 50,000. Alcohol beverage excise tax collections are actually, have a higher trend, and this year, their current period, based on last year, so we're showing a $23,000 increase in that line item. And there are a few other smaller adjustments, basically bringing those line items in line with what the collections are right now. Are there any other questions about revenues?
I saw a key line item that we were not collecting. I saw a fee line item that we were not collecting, is that just for climbing, or is that, is there a negotiated change in that service agreement?
The HYA?
Or charges for services?
Well, actually, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. We're actually moving that to the Capital Projects Fund.
So it's just shifting something that we're not collecting fees?
Right, right, and, you know, I'll talk about that in the Capital Projects Fund, but just to touch on it briefly, the agreement that we have with HYA is that the fees that we collect from them are to be used towards capital improvement projects.
At the park?
At the park, at Bell Memorial Park, and we need a better method of keeping up with it than having it in the general fund, and so the best way to do that is in the Capital Projects Fund. So it's a perpetual fund, so the balance rolls over from year to year, and we can keep up with it a little bit better.
And as it relates to that, is the Parks and Recreation Committee, in conjunction with our staff and obviously our city manager, is that how those funds get identified and allocated annually? In terms of the reallocation of those funds or the investment backing of the parks? So, obviously, the whole premise of that was that if those fees come in, that they then get fed back into the park to help improve that park land.
That's true.
And I was just curious as to how those funds get identified for where the top, I know it's not a lot of money, but where those funds get utilized.
We work in conjunction, staff works in conjunction with HYA to identify some of the priority projects.
I just didn't know if the Parks and Rec Committee was part of that dialogue over time, or if that would be something that they become involved with.
Oh, I think, yeah, Cindy's here, she can talk about her, how they interact with Parks and Rec Advisory Report, but now having Cindy on board, they've got a good relationship with Parks and Rec Advisory Report, so.
Thank you for that.
I think I could answer that yes, unless you want to hear a yes from Cindy.
Yeah.
Is there anything other than a yes? It's nothing other than a yes.
I've got one question, I'm a little bit afraid to ask, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Do we really expect Fulton County to bill on time this year, or do they feel confident that they will be able to do that, rather than being in the situation we were in last year?
I'm not. Hopeful.
I honestly don't know.
Have they given us any indication on way or the other? Because, I mean, obviously, if they go late again, it could be another $6 million adjustment to our budget.
Exactly, and the letter that we received was basically saying that we're going to have to do a temporary collection order this year as well. We are working on a temporary collection order for 2008, 2009, and now it looks like we're going to have to do one for 2010, because they still have not gotten the 2008 digest approved by the Department of Revenue. So I don't know if that, it didn't indicate that that plays a role in when they're actually going to be sending us the digest.
But you haven't received any indication that the digest would be sent late this year, so we hope we will get it on time?
We hope, fingers crossed.
Yeah, everything crossed, I can cross.
Hopefully it's a good thing to be. We need to start saying a prayer for them.
If that'll work, let's try it.
Yeah.
Well, all we can do at this point is hope that they're going to meet the deadline, but we'll be prepared this year like we are now, if they don't meet.
Okay, moving on. Moving on to the expenditures, and the departmental expenditures, just starting with Mayor and Council. This, there are a few adjustments in here to bring it in line with what has actually occurred during the year. The first one, and if you want, I can go line by line, and the first one is a $1,000 adjustment to cover the workers' comp, based on the payroll audit that we had. There's a $3,000 increase for facilitators for the council retreat, a $225 increase for business cards for the Mayor and Council. Dues and fees, there's an increase of $5,000, and this is to cover the support for the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce. I believe this was currently, this was previously covered by CH2M Hill, but since we have transitioned away from them, now Milton is supporting them directly. And then there's a $1,500 increase in food and meals to cover the cost of citizen meetings, and that was previously paid out of the CH2M contract as well. There is a slight decrease of $300 in travel not required for the council retreat, since we had it at Crooked Creek. Is there any questions before I move on? Okay, in the City Clerk's budget, the increases are as follows. There's an increase of $124,102. These are increases that were due to costs that were previously covered on the CH2M contract, but since we transitioned out, we brought the services in-house, and we have to account for those costs directly. So there's an increase in salary and benefits for the deputy city clerk, records clerk, and receptionist. There's an increase of $77 for monthly cellphone expense for the deputy clerk. There's an increase of $500 in advertising for public hearing ads, an increase of $150 in printing for nameplates and business cards, and an increase of $150 in dues and fees for various membership dues, an increase of $14,000 for a temporary receptionist, and an increase of $150 for a cellphone for the deputy city clerk. And these aren't the positions that we currently have. I know that we have an interim city clerk right now, but since we had a city clerk to begin with, we had, we're just calling you a deputy city clerk, because we already paid for a lot of these expenses in the very beginning, just makes things a little bit easier. The total increases to this are $139,129. There are decreases. The decrease in the annual cost of the election was lower than anticipated, so we have a decrease of $57,553. There's a decrease in the termination of the contract with CH2M Hill under professional fees of $266,534, and a decrease of $600 in the general supplies. We're moving the general supplies all to the general admin department. It's just, a lot of these things are, can be used by all of City Hall, and so it's very difficult to break them out, as who gets what little piece, so it's just a lot easier to move it into the general admin department. There's a total decrease of $185,558. Is there any questions?
I have a quick question. On the temporary receptionist, Chris, I don't know if you want to speak to this, is that someone's going to move into a permanent position, or was that, how do you anticipate that shifting or changing?
The office of city clerk is really, in my estimation and based on the workload, a three-person operation. And we need to get to a point which we can, at some point, if we need to have an executive session to discuss personnel, we can talk about permanent city clerk options. At this point, I just don't want us to be pinned in to a permanent full-time employee, depending on the direction of the city clerk's office, so it was an easier way for us to go, so that if, depending on how that office shakes out, to make sure that we are right-sized and not oversized, we have the ability to eliminate staff fairly easy, as opposed to having to go through the city process. So that's what that is right now, it's a temporary placeholder to make sure that the third function in that department gets handled without the long-term commitment, if, depending on other decisions that we make.
So in theory, right now, that's really funding the potential of a permanent, but currently the cost of the temporary.
Exactly.
So there could be some more cost savings there, depending on.
There will be, although I don't, we would be looking at very modest cost savings, if any.
Okay, but it's not, in other words, it's not duplicative, the fact that it's showing up in both.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the City Managers Department. There's only three adjustments in this department. The first one deals with an increase in benefits, that's basically to cover the adjusted cost of workers' comp, based on the payroll audit. There's an increase of $250 in food and meals for business lunches, and a decrease of general supplies to basically move that item over to the general admin department. A total increase in City Managers Department of $450.
Happily answer any questions. Let's start right at workers' health care office personnel.
I don't know, that all?
I know.
I'll happily take questions I can answer.
I'll happily take it.
Give me another chance.
I could get that information for you, if you'd like.
I'll reserve that type. I knew you'd do it too, Bill. All right.
That's okay. Okay, moving on to the General Administration Department. This is accounting, this department is accounting for the City Hall, the rent of the City Hall, City Hall general supplies, inspection of fire extinguishers, postage, maintenance contracts for shredding and coffee service, things like that, and then there's additional expenses not covered in the lease that are a part of the lease agreement that we have. Overall, there's a $518,215 increase in this department. A lot of this is being moved out of the Government Buildings Department, we set that up to account for City Hall lease, but since we recreated this general admin department, we're moving all of those expenses over, or all of those appropriations over from that department.
So the other portion of services, that's basically your can cost, common area maintenance?
Mm-hmm. Moving on to Finance. The increases in this department are as follows. Under administrative fees, there's credit card maintenance fees that were higher than anticipated due to the late billing of property taxes, so we have an increase of $5,000. There's an increase of $5,000 in postage, because the postage for the tax billing hit, or the 2009 tax billing hit in 2010, so we had to increase that by $5,000, anticipating that we're going to have 2010 taxes billed in 2010. There's an increase of $1,760 in printing, because we had to pay for the printing of the tax bills in 2010 as well. The other increases that were in this account were due to the transition of the CH2M contract. Those increases were $191,155 in salary and benefits, and that is to cover Budget and Procurement Coordinator, Accountant, Revenue Clerk, and Disbursement Specialist. Under dues and fees, there's an increase of $205, and that's membership dues for GGFOA, Georgia Government Finance Officers Association. Under maintenance contracts, there's an increase of $116,415, and that's to cover the cost of the financial software that we're currently using. The following decreases are, 440, I'm sorry, $4,480 decrease in professional fees, and those were tax bill mailing fees, they were not necessary because we did not pay mailing fees. We paid postage and we paid printing, but no mailing fees. There is a decrease in the professional fees contracted for the CH contract, and that's Decrease of $12,000, $1,200 in communications, to bring the cellphone costs in line with the actual expenditures, and a decrease of $250 in machinery and equipment for the cellphone purchase that was not necessary. Overall, there's a decrease in this department of $258,924.
Let's test it very quickly. Obviously, the postage tied to tax billings is within Finance, under General Admin, where it talks about another $5,000, does that incorporate the surveys from Parks and Rec, or is that, the postage for Parks and Rec is in the $12,000 for Parks and Rec? So this is just kind of an ancillary? It's cool, because I know that.
I think the postage for Parks and Rec survey is in.
I think it was in that $12,000.
It was in the contract cost.
Contract cost, okay.
It was part of that $12,000, so I just wonder what the $5,000 is.
She's shaking her head no.
Because I didn't see it in Parks and Rec, so that's why I was wondering why this $5,000 was under General Admin, but I didn't see any postage under Parks and Recreation. And it may just be that I don't have my reading glasses on, but when I looked at it earlier with my reading glasses, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I don't believe it was actually included, and I don't think it actually hit whenever I was creating these budget amendments, and so that may be something that's going to change for next week as well.
It was a footnote that I made that we might want to capture, that since we mailed to $12,000 households.
Mm-hmm.
So if the $5,000 of General Administration is not it, we probably have.
We actually haven't been billed for the survey yet, because it was done under the permit, right? It was a permit.
It's total contract prices in cap.
But then we have tougher postage separately, right? Did we not?
It's part of the total contract.
Is it?
Yeah, it's part of the billing for the contract.
Okay. Sorry, it's in Capital Projects.
So that's okay, so I just think that I hadn't seen it in Parks and Rec, I was thinking it was under that contract, but then I just didn't know if any other postage is always going to roll up under General Administration, that's for you guys to decide, but if it doesn't include any of those surveys, it seemed a little bit high, if it wasn't in the tax bills.
Yeah, if we can bill for it in a department specifically, then we'd try to put it in that department, otherwise it's just general postage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the legal. We increased this budget by $40,000, and that's based on current trending. We've had some unanticipated legal fees this year, and I believe you're all aware of what those are. Is there any questions?
Would you base this anticipated increase on, you don't have to.
Okay. Under IT?
I do have one question, though. We think we'll be able to get by on $60,000 for the remaining few months, I mean, because that would be what, April, May, June, July, August, September, five months of legal bills?
I'm comfortable leaving it at this point. Are we talking about whether or not the $40,000 is enough?
Yeah. I mean, $40,000, I mean, I thought at least it's only $60,000 for five months worth of bills. I'm assuming that this, actuals are.
I conferred with our city attorney when I came up with this number, and I think if we trend as we're trending, I think we're okay.
Okay, under Information Technology. The following increases account for the costs that were previously covered under the CH contract. Those are salary and benefit increase of $115,075, and that's for an IT manager and a GIS analyst. An increase of $64,627 in communications, and that's for the monthly cellphone costs for two employees, as well as the cost of City Hall external communications. A $1,000 increase of.
I'm just going to ask if you could be a bit more detailed with that $65,000. I'm hoping that the majority of that's not to cell phones.
No, it's under, it's also City Hall phones. It's for all of City Hall as well, so you're talking about internet and the actual desk phones and.
When I read that line item, it didn't seem quite that clear.
Right, no.
So that includes all of this phone service within City Hall? Thank you. You might just want to make that more clear in that line item.
Okay. Under Education and Training, there's $1,000 for training classes for two employees. Under Maintenance Contracts, there's an increase of $13,527 to cover various maintenance for servers and software. $57 increase under food and meals for an employee meeting. Under Computer Software Costs, there's $124,724, and that's just for various software costs that we've had to purchase through the transition. And under Hardware, there's an increase of $58,544. The following decreases are professional fees, we moved the bandwidth budget to the Communications line item, and that's a $32,120 decrease. Under Professional Fees Contracted, there's a $669,829 decrease for the termination of the contract with CH2M Hill. Under Travel, there's a decrease of $1,000, because the travel's not anticipated for the employees, education and training, we're going to try to do that as local as possible. And under Machinery Equipment, there's, we're taking out the desktop printer of $500. There's a total decrease in this department of $325,885.
I'm sorry, but under Computer Software and Computer Hardware, which includes various, are those costs we expect to be one-time expenses this year, or those be recurring costs?
One-time.
One-time costs, okay, good.
Moving on to Human Resources. There's only decreases in this department. Under Salary and Benefits, we're bringing that in line with actual expenses, so there's a decrease of $23,203. Under Administrative Fees, we are decreasing that by $3,000, because we are performing the retirement cost study in-house. We're decreasing the CH2M Hill contract line item by $70,203. We're decreasing the Office Furniture line item, Furniture and Fixtures line item, for $3,500, because office furniture is not needed. And lastly, we're decreasing machinery and equipment for the computer and printer that's not needed of $3,100. Total decreases are $103,600. Any other questions? Okay. Under Risk Management, there's a total decrease of $19,631. We've received the renewal contract, and this information is just based on actual costs for this year. General Government Buildings, this is the department that I said that we moved the expenses, the appropriations and expenses out of this department and put it in General Admin, so the total decrease of $482,415. Under Public Information and Marketing, the following increases account for the costs that were previously covered under the CH. that were previously covered under the CH contract. Salary and Benefits increased by $78,533 for the Communications Manager. Professional Fees increased by $10,780 for the website design. Communications increased by $1,530 for the monthly cellphone service. Printing increased by $14,608 for the annual report printing. And lastly, the camera equipment increase, or for other equipment, increased by $1,020 for camera equipment. The following decreases were Professional Fees Contracted for the termination of the CH2M Hill contract. There's a decrease of $348,387. And then postage, we're not doing the biannual report mailing, so we decreased that line item by $6,267. Total decreases in this department is $248,183.
Just a quick question. Obviously, across different departments, a lot of times, printing expenses can get pretty high. Is it fair to assume, stated either between your office or Chris', that there's at least some coordination with the hope that we can get some better pricing from a printer sometimes so that we don't end up with a higher price? Because it can get very expensive if we don't-
Yeah, we usually go out to bid for things like that.
It just depends on what we're doing, and the color, how many, and how thick.
I just wonder if sometimes in advance, you know, for the whole year, through some of those relationships, maybe if they anticipate more volume, they may give us a better rate? Because over the departments, it gets expensive. Thank you.
Under Municipal Court, Salary and Benefits increased by $15,614, and that was to account for one-half of the payout of the former city/court clerk. And then Benefits increased by $14,705, and that's to bring budget in line with the cost. And Communications decreased by $500 for the elimination of the GCIC access cost. Total increases in this department are $29,819. Moving on to Police. Increases in this department are for Motorola radios. We actually budgeted for these radios in the Capital Projects Fund whenever we approved for the new vehicles, and we just brought those out of the Capital Projects Fund and put them into the General Fund because they actually are General Fund expenditures. There's an increase in that line item of $18,671. Under Hardware, there's an increase of $3,658 for iCop Digital that we're also budgeted with the new vehicles and Capital Projects Fund. Total decreases are, include a decrease of $103,710 under Salary and Benefits, and this is because personnel started later in the fiscal year than, at the very beginning of the fiscal year, so. And gasoline and diesel was decreased by $35,000 to bring it in line with actual trending. Total decreases in this department are $116,381. Okay, moving on to Fire. There's an increase of $7,950 in this department, and that was basically moving the Furnitures and Fixtures line item from Capital Projects over into the General Fund. It's not really Capital Project item, so it needs to be a General Fund expenditure. There are decreases of $108,652 in Salary and Benefits, and that was because there was a misunderstanding whenever we did the budget in the beginning. I miscounted the number of personnel that we actually had, and due to that, we actually were over one position than we should have been. Under Professional Fees, there's a decrease of $800 because we eliminated recruitment psych testing. In General Supplies Prevention, we cut the cost of the heart-ready city supplies by $10,000. Under Gasoline and Diesel, costs were lower than anticipated, so we were able to decrease that line item by $5,000. And under Uniforms, costs were also lower than anticipated, so we decreased that line item by $3,630. Total decreases are $120,132.
Stacy, why did we eliminate the recruitment psych testing for firefighters?
Because we just don't anticipate needing any between now and the end. You know, it's one of those things where we're staffed, and-
It's not something we're staffed and doing.
We just don't need this funding between now and the end of the fiscal year.
The one in crazy firefighter.
Chief, you want to comment on that?
Stacy, would you explain to me again the salaries and benefits? The benefits are almost 200% of salaries, which is-
Give me just a second and log back on to my computer. We had initially budgeted $10,000 for what we call termination liability, and that is to account for employees that leave and take a lot of vacation time with them. Since we account for that through attrition, we don't hire personnel right off the bat whenever somebody does leave us. We accounted for those costs under Salary and Benefits, so we were able to decrease that by $10,000. Overtime was decreased by $10,000 as well. The chief has been very, very hands-on about managing his overtime and has done a very great job of doing that, the chief as well as all of his personnel. The group insurance cost was decreased by $61,583. Some of that went towards flexible spending. $27,000 went towards flexible spending. When we budgeted for group insurance, we budgeted $5,000 per employee. Some employees did not use the full $5,000, and some employees did not even use our insurance at all. When they don't use our insurance at all, they get some money contributed toward a flexible spending plan. So through all of that, we were able to decrease it by the amount that you see there. Okay? So any other questions for the Fire Department? Moving on to Public Works. So the following increases are costs that were previously covered under the CH contract that are now brought in-house. So Salary and Benefits increased by $283,050, and that's for Public Works Director, a Public Works Manager, Field Supervisor, Citizen Responder, and a part-time equipment operator. Vehicle Road and Maintenance increased by $2,000. Road Repair and Maintenance increased by $55,000, and that's for pothole repairs and maintenance. Communications increased by $2,200 for monthly cellphone and radio costs. Other Purchase Services increased by $6,000 for guard rail repair. Printing increased by $100 for business cards. Dues and Fees increased by $300 for Membership Dues. Education and Training increased by $1,610 for staff education and training. Uniforms increased by $1,552 for uniforms, obviously. Other Equipment increased by $26,116, and that's for aftermarket vehicle supplies, sand spreaders, and various other small equipment. And Motorola Radios increased by $7,577, and that's for the vehicles. Total decreases were in the Professional Fees Contracted account of $415,876 for the termination of the contract. Total decreases are $30,371. And just so you understand how we came up with the Professional Fees, I guess, amount, we basically carried on the contracts that we currently have. We have them out to bid right now, but because we don't really know how that's going to move forward for the rest of the fiscal year, we just carried out those same exact costs for the rest of the fiscal year, hoping that they're going to be lower than what they currently are. So we could receive more savings in this department by the end of the fiscal year.
While you're on that same topic, Professional Fees for the other departments, how did you come up with those numbers since we had a lump sum contract?
That was based on information that we had at the time, number of employees, what we did. I did a budget research of, I guess it was analysis of what other cities and the percentages of other cities used for their departments, and did an average of that, applied that toward the contract, and just, like I said, information that we were provided whenever we were going through the budget at the time.
It's not exact, and there's no way we'd get it exact because they weren't going to share the breakdown. So it's as close as we could get to give y'all something to-
So this is sum total equaling the aggregate of the savings that we have been talking-
Sum total equals the aggregate of the savings, yes.
I have a quick question. Carter, this is actually for you. Just as guard rail repair, is that one specific location, or is this just periodic? We just never really talked about guard rails around, and obviously, we all can see where they've been smashed into. I just didn't know if that was one particular location.
In this particular case, it's one location, Providence Road Bridge. Typically, when they get damaged, we will have the insurance company pay for them, and we've done that in every case so far this year, but we do have one that we're trying to make some repairs to on Providence Road.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who covers the cost of barricade on Francis Road at the end of Thompson? It gets mailed about once a month.
Barricade on Francis-
As you come out of the Crickin Creek subdivision, and you take a right, and then you take a left on the Thompson, there's a guard rail right there at the end of Thompson Road as it comes into Francis.
I can picture it fine. Thereby, K-9 assistance.
Yeah, I can't picture that. If we know who, generally, what we'll do is we'll get the police report if there's been one filed and track it back through the insurance carrier. I'm not aware that we've had to pay for one of those out of pocket at that particular location.
Any other questions before I move on? All right, under Parks and Recreation.
Before you get into this one, Stacy, Cindy has told me that the line that's in Education and Training that shows $300 increase, that needs to be a $300 decrease. So before you read that, flip it down.
Got it.
You're saying the $600.
She'll take her-
Well, I love her. All right, under Increases, there's an increase under Professional Fees Contracted of $16,200, and that was for Brad Chambers. Under Grounds Repair and Maintenance, there's an increase of $3,500, and that's for Park Grounds and Repair and Maintenance. Under Printing, there's an increase of $100 for business cards. And the decreases for Salary and Benefits are $17,404, and that was because we did not have a Parks and Rec Director in the very beginning. And there's now a decrease in Education and Training of $300. I'll make those changes for next week. That extra little savings is going towards fund balance. Any questions in that department?
We'll now have a total increase of $2,096.
All right. Under Community Development, the following increases account for costs that were previously covered under the CH contract. Salary and Benefits of $430,521, and that covers a Community Development Director, three planners, a Plan Review Engineer, Arborist, Construction Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer, and a Code Enforcement Officer. Under Professional Fees, there's a $12,105 increase, and that was for the cell tower application review. Under Vehicle Repairs, there's a $5,000 increase because now we have vehicles in community development that we'll have to maintain. Under Communications, there's a $5,588 increase for cellphone costs. For Advertising, there's a $4,095 increase of public notices. Printing, $500 increase for business cards and other printing costs. Travel, a $900 increase for employee travel to training sessions. Dues and Fees, $260 increase. Gasoline and Diesel, $10,800 increase. And Uniforms, $1,000 increase. The decreases are, under Professional Fees Contracted, is the termination of the contract with CH2M Hill of $960,000. Oh, Lord, I can't even talk today. Yes, I'm tongue-tied. $960,591. And in General Supplies, we're moving that to the General Admin Department. There's a decrease of $2,300. Total decrease of $492. Oh, gosh. Let me just take over.
Save it yourself.
I know. Any questions?
Other than the cell tower application review, everything else was just a transfer from CH2M, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't put that under the right heading, but yes.
Everything else was.
Everything else was.
Was there not a penalty for canceling their contract?
There wasn't. Bill, that was in the contract as what was called demobilization costs, and there were certain stair steps down in demobilization costs, and we were outside of that window. So when we separated, there were no demobilization costs.
Moving on to Debt Service. We just have an increase of totaling $7,146, and this is to cover the lease of a police vehicle that we purchased at the very end of fiscal 2009 that came into fiscal utilities in first payment. Under Other Financing Uses, we have an increase of unallocated, and this is basically the amended revenues over expenditures. There's $7,815,944, and operating transfer out to Capital Projects Fund, I'll discuss that in a minute, is an increase of $461,361. Decreases are in unallocated. There's a decrease of $3,085, and that's for the 1% contingency. Since we have lowered the expenditure cost overall, we actually can lower the 1% required that we had to put away for contingency. Under Operating Transfers Out to Capital Grant Fund, there's a decrease of $178,240, and I'll talk about that when I get to that fund, as well as operating transfer out to Operating Grant Fund of a decrease of $20,000. Overall, there's a total increase of $8,75,980 in other financing uses.
And of that, most of that was due to the timing difference between when property taxes were billed, correct?
Yes.
It's not a $7,000 additional, $400 for us to play with?
No. That's basically putting it towards a reserve. I mean, we'll talk about that in just a minute, about what we can do with that, but that's putting it all towards reserves. The Confiscated Assets Fund, this is a fund that we have to use the seized drug money for specific uses. We had some seized drug money last year, and we're basically bringing the budget forward for this year to use because we have had some expenditures. So there's an overall increase in this fund of $43,895. We did not have an approved budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, so this is basically just bringing it in line with what was already collected.
What can that be used for? Well, kind of the rule of thumb is it can't be used for salaries, but it can be used for operational things that the police department needs in the form of equipment, or you can use it for training. One of the things that I think the police department, in fact, another police department's going to use it for very soon is some training programs for the police officers, and that's kind of one of the generally accepted good uses of that.
Is it solely for the police department, or is it for the fire department, sure?
No, it really needs to stay in the, potentially, I guess you could use some of it for fire department training, but it's a lot cleaner if it stays in the law enforcement department, just cleaner.
Moving on to the Operating Grant Fund. This fund is accounting for grants that aren't classified as capital. We have a couple of grants. We have the SAFER Grant, which is paying for some fire personnel, and we are moving the flood reimbursement grant that we got from GMA over from the General Fund into this account, into this fund. So we're increasing revenues by 40, let's see, overall, $21,364, but I'll get to that. The GMA flood reimbursement, we're increasing that by $40,348, but that's what we have received so far. Right? I think that's what we received so far for that particular event. We do have some expenditures that match that as well. We are increasing the Crab Apple Festival by $1,016. We received a grant from the Fulton County Arts Council for the Crab Apple Festival, and we- and we got the last bit of that funding in fiscal year 2010, so we have to count for it there. And we're decreasing the operating transfers in from the general fund by $20,000. And that's for the livable centers initiative. We're not going to do that this year, so we're going to have to probably reappropriate those monies next year whenever we do the budget for fiscal year 2011.
Why aren't we going to do that this year? Or why didn't we? If it's too late, why? I don't...
We've missed the window for it.
Yeah, I'll have to find an exact answer. I don't... Was that for the Highway 9? Well, we've applied for Highway 9 and Crab Apple before. Remember, when we applied for both of them and received neither of them. So those are the two areas that are prime for an LCI. Actually, I do know the answer to this question why we didn't do it this year. So we started to... Now it's all coming back to me. We started to do some work with ARC and figure out what they might be interested in with respect to the Highway 9 area. And the way that we could have applied for an LCI this year was to do it jointly with the city of Alpharetta, only a very small portion. What they were interested in was the corridor on Windward Parkway from 400 kind of west. And it would have started to come a little bit up Highway 9, but it didn't go far. I had some discussions with the city of Alpharetta, this was a while ago, as to how we could effectively split the cost of going through this process with them since 85% of the result and the result of work in the LCI would be in the city of Alpharetta. Diana Wheeler and I just couldn't get to anything other than a 50-50 split. And it just, we both agreed that it was probably better that we put it off until the next year and get the respective councils on board to figure out how we equitably fund an LCI. So let me get you some more information about that, but we did talk about that. The portion that ARC was even interested in was just, I mean, we got into the LCI area. Basically, Windward. It was Windward that sort of branched up onto Highway 9, but I don't even think the bubble on the map carried us as far north as Webber. So it was largely a Windward Parkway LCI to figure out how they moved traffic between 400 and Highway 9. More details on that, though, from the experts from the audience and the audience.
A quick question on flood reimbursement. And Carter, I know that this is an area that you've been involved with after the floods that we encountered, citizens encountered. Are those funds already been, have they been allocated or identified for allocation? And how many of those are private owners versus damage to, you know, public areas?
It's all public infrastructure. They've been designated and spent.
And at the time that FEMA had come through as well, I know that citizens continue to sometimes inquire about that. And I know you had done some work with FEMA. Obviously, those are not these funds. Do you continue to have any involvement with that in terms of additional funding or reimbursement that might have been coming from federal funding?
We don't. The one group that we did have some discussions with actually were from the EWP funds through NRCS. We looked at that particular project off of Denzmore and NRCS determined that it was too far off of the right of way to cover those. So we did get one project allocated from those EWP funds, but it was in the public right of way, not on any on private property.
Terrific. But at this point, those should all be finalized. We've received any funds that we anticipate.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen, I'll tell you, Grand, this must be a good thing because Lynn must be sitting at home watching us on computer. She just texted me to say my brain kicked in all right, so I actually got the LCI thing right, so we can also hide Lynn.
Hello, Lynn.
And wherever she might be, she is watching us nevertheless.
Okay, moving on to the capital projects fund. There are some changes in this fund from what was presented last week and I'll go through those as I reach them. Under the revenues, the one change was, the first change was the HYA fees. We moved those from the general fund. That's an increase of $57,650. That's the $25,000 from this year as well as the $32,650 from prior year. So we're bringing all of those monies over into the capital projects fund. There's an increase in the capital lease proceeds to account for the capital lease of a police vehicle and a fire apparatus. We purchased a police vehicle at the end of fiscal year 2009, as I mentioned earlier, for $20,500. Though what we have to account for lease purchases is we have to actually account for the full expenditure of the vehicle as well as the full revenue coming in from the capital lease. And then lease payments are paid out of the general fund. It's a little confusing, a little annoying whenever you're trying to explain it to people, but that's just the way we have to do it. So we have to show a revenue and expenditure equalling and then capital lease payments out of the general fund. So the fire apparatus, just to touch on that a little bit, that's a change from last week as well. What we budgeted in this fiscal year for the fire apparatus was we budgeted the first year lease payment. The entire cost of the fire apparatus vehicle that was requested was $610,000. Because, Carter, Lord, you're sitting right next to me, aren't you? Because Bob does such a fantastic job of doing his research and really trying to find the right vehicle for the city of Milton at the right cost, we were actually able to get a fire apparatus for $426,000. We have that on order right now, right? Yes, it's on order, so it probably won't come in until later on, maybe August, September. The first lease payment will not happen this fiscal year, so we actually do not have a lease payment in the general fund for this particular apparatus. But we do have to show the full cost of the vehicle and the full cost of the offsetting revenue.
What type of apparatus is it going to be?
It's a Pumper, similar to a 41, 42, 43. We did a lot of research on the vehicle and we did a time limit, the price of reasonable and really low thrills too. It's going to be a pretty basic truck.
Does it hold water?
Yes, it's 1,000 gallons of water. Actually, it's, our existing companies now have 750 gallons, this will go to 1,000. So actually, the highest price is a tank of, which is beneficial to some of our areas.
Where will you house that, Stacy?
Right now, it's designated as a reserve unit, but I think what we're going to do is rotate those out and hopefully the best place for that unit is up next, Station 43, which is a further stout station. And that's some of the areas that we have limited to.
Good, thank you.
Moving on, we've adjusted operating transfers in for these following reasons. The purchase of new vehicles for the departments that transitioned from CH2M Hill, we've had to bring in $151,415 from the general fund. New software for the finance and community development departments, so $354,000. And just to touch on that just for a moment, that did increase by $20,000 only as a precaution. I don't know if the current software is actually going to charge us for conversion costs, for extraction of the data. I've not heard anything from them. There's not anything in the contract that states they will charge us for that, but they've charged us for other things in the past that I wasn't anticipating and so I'd rather just put something in there to be safe. We are cutting the budget balance for the color or the photography. The project is complete and so we are actually decreasing that by $3,675. And as I mentioned, we adjusted down the first year lease payment for the fire apparatus of $188,000. $100,800. Because that lease payment will not hit until fiscal year 2011. We're transferring the budget for the fire furniture and fixtures to the general fund. I think I mentioned that previously whenever I went through the fire department. We're transferring $7,950. And we paid for the approved police vehicles in full instead of leasing them. That is certainly an option to go ahead and get leasing for all of the vehicles that we've purchased. We've chosen since we had the funds and it actually costs less to pay for it in full than to lease because we're not earning hardly any interest on our monies right now. So we are actually increasing that by $10,721. There was a change in the amount that I appropriated last week for the community development vehicles. I had $100,000 in there because I did not have the final cost for all of their vehicles yet. We did receive the final cost, so we actually were able to decrease that from $100,000 to $39,115. So there was a little bit of savings there of $60,000.
And those vehicles, is that code enforcement? Who else is that?
Code enforcement as well as the plan...
You've got code enforcement, you've got building inspectors. Vehicle now with somebody that goes to and from our parks.
So is that three?
Mark Aral.
Public Works, an arborist.
So Public Works is within this budgeted amount? I was thinking it was Community Development, that's why I wasn't thinking it was Public Works. Because there was, looking at what we had prior to this evening, there was another account of $100,000, so it was about $200,000 in vehicles, so I was just curious.
Yeah, Public Works had $100,000 and Community Development had $100,000.
I guess, and we don't have to resolve it tonight, just a question would be, where's the $200,000 in vehicles?
We actually now only have...
It seems like a lot of money for vehicles.
We have $139,115 of vehicles now instead of the $200,000 in vehicles. We had the pool vehicle, which is a Fusion. We have, let's say, two F-150s and a Ranger in the public, I mean, code, Community Development Department. In Public Works, we have two F-150s and an Explorer. And...
Two F-150s and Explorer in Public Works.
And I believe that was it of all the vehicles that we had to purchase through this transition. So... Six, seven?
We'll talk about this in a minute. We still are lacking the amount of rolling stock simply because our city is so big. If you keep people loud and active, it really becomes more cost effective based on how policies are written at this point. But anytime employees go more than 10 miles, they can bill us for mileage. It becomes a lot more cost effective for us to have rolling stock that's well taken care of than it does to pay mileage every time somebody wants to leave the building.
And just depending on capacity, I didn't know how many of those were shared vehicles or allocated. I'm assuming most of them are shared.
They are. And most of them are, you have people fighting over them in the halls to actually grab the keys to go do what they need to do. So we're going to talk about that in a minute. I do believe we are still, and we shopped low when we decided to buy stuff. Because anytime you buy stuff, it's easier to, it's easier to buy more than it is to try to give stuff back in order to really do, I think, the job that we need to do and have access to enough people getting out into the community is all we can do. I still think we're a couple short. One particularly, a pool vehicle. And I say pool, that just means anybody who needs to go somewhere can go jump in and go.
Go to the pool.
No, I don't mean go to the pool. I mean, it's in a pool. And...
It's the Parks and Recreation car, right? The door to the pool.
Yes.
How are we handling maintenance on all these vehicles?
They're in each of the departments. If you look through Community Development, we actually had a budget adjustment for that as well as in Public Works. There's a budget adjustment for vehicle repairs and maintenance.
Do we have a sole source?
That's been bid and we do, we just attached it to the... Obviously, we own vehicles before the CH2M Hill contract. We just have a handful of new ones, but yes, we've attached them to our bid. And they go to a place out in Milton-Bethany and have an ankle back on the road. That's who won the bid.
It's a Milton business.
It is a Milton business.
Can I say that sidewalks have been reduced to $100,000?
That's only moving it from Public Works over to Parks and Recreation in the Milton Trails because basically that is what that money is for. As well as we're also combining the park improvements budget with the land acquisition and park enhancement budget. They're basically the same thing. So there's no sense in having two separate line items. Might as well just go ahead and combine them. And one other change that we mentioned, we haven't mentioned yet, is there's a decrease in the comp plan budget of $10,000. And since this is a rolling budget from year to year, at the end of a fiscal year, I try to cap when we can actually hit the prior fiscal year for expenditures. And there was one that slipped past me of $10,000. And so I rolled over a budget too much for comp plan. And so basically, this is just decreasing it back down to where it should be. I think we've pretty much talked about all of the different adjustments in the capital improvement.
How much have we had to spend on the comp plan today?
Today, I think it's on the next page. No, it's not. Let it carry those over, hold on.
It's going to yell at you again.
I know.
There he goes.
I don't know, what in the world is up with Stacy? You're with me just a minute. $116,000, I'm sorry, that's not right. There's initially a budget of $200,000 for this? You're going to make me do some calculations, aren't you?
That's okay, you can.
Okay.
I'd just like to know how much is actually still left and spent.
Okay, I'll get that for you. Let me write it down. Thank you. Okay, were there any other questions for the capital projects fund? Yes, Bill?
On the Pumper, is that a five-year lease?
Yes, we're going to do a five-year lease on that whenever we actually get to it. Since it's going to fall in the next fiscal year, it'll show up for fiscal year 2011 debt service payment. And since it's so far out, I can't tell you what the interest rate's going to be for that.
But it's a capital lease, so it will be ours if we need to...
Yes.
On the Arnold Mill Corridor study, do we anticipate, Chris or Stacy, when we would have a request proposal that would go out? I know that Lynn's watching, but not here, so she may have that answer. And that may also be a function of the comprehensive plan and CPAC. But my assumption that's not been written yet, it's just a placeholder at this point.
Right. Moving on to the capital grant fund. This fund accounts for grants for capital projects. We are increasing the, or I'm sorry, decreasing the transportation master plan project for $226,307 because that plan is complete. We are also accounting for G.HPP funds, the 80% of the cost of the project. When the prior Public Works Director was here, I guess we had just a little miscommunication as to when we could actually submit reimbursement requests for those funds. I was told that we actually had to build up that our 20% before we could actually start submitting reimbursement requests. But that's not true. We actually are able to submit reimbursement requests for the 80% of the grant as we go along through the project. And so that's bringing the revenues in line with the actual expenditures that we've already had appropriated. Because we have, or we are able to account for the G.HPP funds, we've actually decreased the amount transferred in from the general fund by $178,240 for the funding needed for this year. It's just not needed this year. We have enough money appropriated in this fiscal year to fully account for the expenditures that we anticipate. And we're moving some of the budgeted fund balance. We're decreasing that by $890,000 because we have the G.HPP funds. I'm just moving that from the budgeted fund balance into the line item for HPP funds. The total decrease for this fund is $29,685. Is there any questions?
I have one question that comes to mind, Carter. This may be more your mallet whip than Stacy's. As it relates to Birmingham, Providence, I know that out of that transportation meeting, we had some folks that inquired with us. I don't recall that we had a final answer for them. With, because we're proposing the roundabout and knowing that a portion of what had been allocated historically was in 80/20, but we've heard, obviously, from Red and Beech and from others, that the DOT is now funding, at least in some instances, 100% of roundabouts. But there was a question as to whether or not that 100% necessarily would apply to this intersection, whether it applied to acquisition of... whether it applied to acquisition of right-of-way, et cetera. Can you maybe just speak, I think where we ended up was that we needed to be conservative and it should, we needed to stick with the eighty-twenty. But is there a chance that we'd be able to get at least a portion of it allocated in a hundred percent from, from GDOT?
Uh, there's a chance, and that's one of the questions that we'll discuss with GDOT at our concept meeting next week. To the best of my knowledge, it does fund a hundred percent for the use of roundabouts, including right-of-way acquisition, when those funds are available. To the best of my knowledge, they're not available in this particular year, but we would be planning out, cut several years in advance. So, uh, one of the things that we'll discuss with the GDOT next week is if we have moved to this roundabout concept plan, does that change our funding allocation, so?
I would just ask if you'd ask them to put us at the top of the list.
And they have actually federal funds that are coming through the state that would come to us, correct? The round, the roundabout?
In both cases, it's federal funds coming through the state.
But maybe it will be at the top of that list when those funds become available.
Right, right.
Thank you. Because that would be really lovely to be able to get that twenty percent back.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, now, let's, um, let's kind of break this down a little bit. Um, we do have some money going into reserves, and, um, just, just so you understand where we are with this, we have seven, a little over seven point eight million dollars going into reserves right now. What we need in reserves is four point two million dollars to cover what we need, what we require to carry, which is sixteen percent of our operating budget, as well as the deficit from, from last fiscal year. We had a one point six million dollar deficit from last year. Total of those two together is four point two million dollars. So what we have to work with is a little over three point six million dollars. So Chris is going to kind of talk about what we propose to do with some of that money. Um, this is something for you to decide. So, Chris, take it over.
All right. What would be helpful if we could get to tonight is for us to put as much, I can figure out how I can see this, but it would still be hard. No, I can't see the name. Oh, well, all right, let me just do it, do it. Um, figure out exactly, you know, how, how we can best tweak this thing so that the next time it comes before you, it's as close as it can possibly be for us to, to actually adopt it. Um, obviously, we've got some savings from the CH2M Hill contract. It's a good number, it's a good position to be in, to sit mid-year and try to figure out how we appropriate money as opposed to trying to figure out how we save money. Although, I want to start this discussion by saying that I've got a couple of recommendations tonight. Obviously, some staff recommendations on how we reappropriate a little bit of it. I'm going to tell you, though, also, that my hope, and obviously you can overrule me here, but my hope is that we don't spend every penny tonight, that we stick as much of it in a contingency account, unallocated account, as we can. This is not the right economy to all of a sudden spend every penny. There's just too much uncertainty out there, and I would feel a whole lot more comfortable if we spend what we need to, to at least accomplish some of the things that we committed to doing at the beginning of fiscal year, but then not try to figure out a way to spend every last dime. It's okay at the end of tonight if we have a sizable chunk go into a contingency account, that's okay. That makes me more comfortable going into the next fiscal year. Obviously, that, having said that, there's a couple of things I think we would be well served to do at the mid-year. And I'll kind of walk you through what those are, and then we'll have a discussion to see if there's any, if, number one, to see if you agree with me, number two, to see if there's anything else that you think that I might have missed that would be a priority for the council to go ahead and fund. Starting at the very beginning, as you all remember, when we entered into this budget year, we, in the Capital Projects Fund, we removed a half million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars from Parks and Recreation land acquisition with the disclaimer at the beginning of the fiscal year that we anticipated savings from CH2M Hill in that transition, we would pay ourselves back. Being true to that word, I at least want to present to you tonight that we do have the funding and that it would be my recommendation that we go ahead and pay back that five hundred thousand dollars. That's a fairly straightforward one. I want to also tell you that I've been working with SafeBilt, and SafeBilt does plan review for the city, and I won't need to go into necessarily a lot of detail there. But we've got two people that are in the building from SafeBilt. One is a kind of a permit technician, which is Tanika, that sits at the window, and the other is Melissa Henderson. At this point, we're at an eighty-twenty split with SafeBilt, which means they only get paid when they're working, and we hit a portion of the revenues on a twenty percent split when they're working. It's a great kind of a concept to have, especially during this time in the economy, because it's not one of those that we carry overhead. Um, it's, it's a revenue stream when they're working, but it's not an expenditure.
Rubbing off on you.
Stream when they're not working. Tanika, who is here in the, in the windows, a permit tech, I can tell you that after reviewing some of the work that she does, about fifteen to twenty percent of what she does is probably dedicated to the City of Milton, which is okay, because she's a SafeBilt employee, they just have her about eighty percent of her time doing stuff for some of their other projects. That's of no consequence to the City of Milton. Although, I do believe that, as we've looked at some of the workflow, particularly in the Community Development Department, we were very conservative in the number of staff members we had. And there probably is some legitimate need for some lower-paid administrative-type help in the Community Development Department. The concept that I have, which I think is actually revenue-bearing, revenue-enhancing for the city, is we've negotiated with CH, or with, gosh, how many times have I said that? Uh, we've negotiated with SafeBilt that we could explore a seventy-thirty split if we would be willing to take over the functions of that permit tech in the window. We've done some number crunching and, uh, you know, I guess I don't want to give away my negotiating platform, so I'm not going to cite to you a specific number here publicly that I believe our revenues need to be. The, the breakpoint, you know, whether that's a seventy-five, twenty-five, a seventy, you know, a seventy-four, twenty-six, I don't want to, I don't want to tell you what my magic number is here sitting, I'd be happy to tell you in the contract negotiation world, but, um, bringing it to a seventy-thirty split, looking at revenues, even in the slow revenue time that we're having right now, and looking at actually all of Milton's history, to take over those functions and increase our revenue by ten percent, we actually, that, that is a win for the city on a revenue basis, if we were to assume those duties and functions in that position. And we're about at the barrel bottom at this point with work in that department because of the building that's going on. I think it makes sense to explore enhancing the amount of revenue we receive to the thirty percent, but taking over those functions, especially as we start to move through a time where we're going to try to transition the business licensing out of the Finance Department and into the Community Development Department, which, too, is where it is probably better aligned. I say all that to say that if that seems like a decent concept to you, I would like to explore that further. I do, again, think that it is revenue-positive for the city to do that. So I would make the recommendation that we explore that. I kind of mentioned it before, and I'll mention it again. We were really very conservative in the number of vehicles that we bought during the transition. I am still seeing more mileage requests come in that I'm comfortable with, and I would really like to put the mileage requests, the match our policy, so there's nothing that's out of policy. But we're paying more in mileage than I think we are, that we probably should be at this point. There's two vehicles that I would like to recommend we look at in this, in this budget. And I didn't come around on the second one until this week, actually, when I was looking at some of the mileage requests I got and tried to figure out what the life cycle of a vehicle would be versus kind of paying on mileage on a consistent basis over five to seven years, and I still think we win with a general, just a general, typical government state contract pool vehicle. I'm talking a fifteen thousand dollar, top to bottom vehicle. We're not looking for anything fancy, just something that allows our employees to get around town. The other, and fourth and kind of final thing that I will, well, two more things I want to throw at you. The other one that I really think, and this is probably long overdue, I just haven't had a chance to get it in front of you, long overdue, would be the, the training component in our fire department. We've got a wonderful training captain. I've got to say, he might be almost too wonderful in that he has not billed us a dime for mileage. And all he does all day is fit into our policy to where he potentially could, because he drives here and drives his Toyota Camry between the fire stations all day long during our firefighting. And I really think that the longer we push that without allowing there to be something that moves, now that we're moving into the ALS world, we're going to see that in a resolution next week. You know, we've got the big, the dummy that fell out here in the council chambers has got to go from station to station to station. That was a, that was not a real person, I didn't call a real person a dummy. It's a mannequin. But, uh, you know, I really think that if we have an opportunity to, to fund that, we are doing ourselves good service by, by doing that, particularly looking at what we are, with all the savings that we have in this, this mid-year budget. Want to bring up a couple more things. So far, I've told you about the permit tech, I've told you about Parks and Rec, I've told you about two vehicles. The other thing that I would like for us to look at starting to fund on, on a probably a larger basis, and we could either do this now, or we could do this at fiscal, the fiscal year eleven, either or. But we are going to need to now, now that our vehicles are getting to the point that they're starting, are starting to have higher mileage on them, and now that we're getting to the point where our capital lease payments are disappearing for those initial round of purchases, I'm ready to start recommending to you, and we will put together a plan to systematically fund the vehicle replacement reserve. We pay a annual payment for our lease, just north of seven hundred thousand dollars every January. That bought the first fleet of police vehicles and the first fleet of fire trucks. Uh, we make our last payment on January two thousand and twelve. So presumably, what could happen is then that seven hundred thousand dollars that has been, it wouldn't be abnormal for you or it wouldn't all of a sudden look as a shock in the budget if January two thousand and thirteen, that seven hundred and nine thousand dollars that we're paying to a capital lease payment starts to fund the vehicle replacement reserve. I just don't want to bet on chance, and the chance that we bet on is that as our vehicles start to get into the seventy, eighty, ninety, hundred, hundred and ten thousand mile range, I'd like us to start building that now. And that's not to say we will, we will need it, our vehicles are running, police vehicles are running somewhere in the neighborhood of forty to seventy thousand miles, depending on which one you look at. And that's just, um, one of the things we're plagued with is a big city. I mean, we've got a lot of mileage, and, you know, you, police officers could put, could put easily a hundred miles on a shift, easily. Gosh, back in the day, I used to put a hundred miles on in twelve hours in the City of Alfredo Smaller's, and that's just general driving around, so. Whether we look at funding a vehicle replacement reserve now, or whether we put that one on the table and actually wait till fiscal year eleven, know that I want to bring that to your attention, that that's something that we need to start funding. Just want to put you on notice of a couple of other things, which is why I'm kind of leaning towards telling you at this point, if we don't have a exact way to spend something, let's put it in savings. But a couple of other things that are on the horizon that, that we're watching for. One is, I think I've talked individually with each of y'all about how the Public Safety Department, Police and Fire both will need to move to a, that's coming next.
Okay.
How they would need to move to a, a different radio system. I think we've talked about that before, the radio system that all of North Fulton County is, that is on right now, is, is certainly in need of repair. The unfortunate thing is it's twenty years old and there's just no parts. We can't keep our public safety professionals on a failing system much longer. Thankfully, this is one of those opportunities, we're all five cities. And even Denver, to some extent, in North Fulton, has come together to try to solve this problem. We, again, know that there's probably some enhancements that have to be made to this urban area system that exists out there. And we're pretty grounded in the amount of money that the enhancements are going to cost, although we'll have better numbers near the end of this month. We collectively, as a region and as five cities, have jointly applied for three grants to try to fund the enhancements that are needed. And when you apply regionally, especially with federal grants, that's looked highly upon. Although, as John McDonough and I, he's the city manager in Sandy Springs, said immediately last week, we said, "Well, that's all well and good until the grants don't come through, and if we don't at least put in the back of our head that we might have to fund these enhancements," we're going to have to fund the enhancements, because the last thing we need is police and firefighters who can't talk. So, the, the good thing is that, let's just say, these enhancements cost four million dollars, and that's not four million dollars for the City of Milton. At least right now, in concept, we've agreed that we would, we would pay on a per, on a subscriber basis, per capita basis, based on subscribers, a subscriber, a subscriber is a radio. So if we have eighty-eight radios, and there's a total of fifteen hundred radios on the system, then we would pay eighty-eight of fifteen hundred, we pay based on the number of subscribers. Long story short, we have a much less potential impact than the other, than a city like Alfredo, for example, that has more than four hundred users on the system, or Sandy Springs that has three eighty-five. The place I, I, well, let me just stop it. There, there's, there's one other issue that I want to make sure we don't go to with that system, but I don't, I'm not ready to talk about it yet. I'll show my cards to the other, to the other negotiating people. Just note that there's an opportunity, that there's some expense coming, so I want to make sure that we're prepared for it.
Do you have any sense of when those grants, when we'll know about the grants?
Well, we've gotten feedback on one of them, positive feedback, positive feedback that they're interested in this, they just might not be interested in this to the extent of four million dollars.
They'll take any interest.
But we'll take any interest, you're right. You know, there's a second one that's more of a federal grant, the third one is the assistance firefighter grant. We actually are in the process of applying right now. That will be before you all for approval here shortly. So, two are in. One, I can tell you we won't have any answer for soon, because we haven't actually signed it and sent it in.
Right.
By the end of this month, so. At the end of the day, and it is, at the end of the day, we need to be thankful that at least the concept at this point is that there are other cities, and me too, are, are willing to recommend to the councils that we share this based on a subscriber basis. There are two cities that really need these enhancements, actually, two and a half, sort of, that need these enhancements to go live on this new system. Alfredo and Johns Creek are the two that get off pretty scot-free. Uh, the City of Roswell needs enhancements, Sandy Springs needs it down by the Chattahoochee River, and we need it for almost our whole city. So, that having been said, we, we, we need to play nice with the other cities and come to a place that we can all agree on how we share this, share, share the funding split, because I, you know, honestly, Alfredo and Johns Creek could go to it tomorrow and say, "I'm not interested in this enhancement at all. I don't need enhancements." And they're right. But the fact that, that they are open to coming into it as a region, on a regional basis is, is, is good. That's getting into the actual nitty-gritty of that particular, I didn't bring it to this discussion tonight to get into the nitty-gritty. Just want to let you know that there's some stuff that's out there that I see on the horizon, may or may not need funding for, so that's why I don't want to spend every penny tonight. The other thing that potentially will have some funding attached to it in the, in the shorter term is to relocate where the Public Works Department stores their stuff. As you all may very well aware, it's right in the middle of the park at this point, and that's not probably where they will end up long-term. In any case, that, that building, which is a renovated barn, number one is in the middle of a park, number two is not overly secure, number three, you've probably now seen that we're starting to get some, if you pulled up front, you saw there's a speed trailer out in, in the, in the front that just finally got delivered. You know, we've got a need now, an increased need to provide some secure storage for the Public Works equipment, now that it's actually our stuff. So I see in the future, again, on the horizon, that there's going to need to be some enhancements for the, for Public Works. Want to call it a yard, want to call it a storage area, call it what you want, but there's going to be some need for funding there. We don't know what that funding is going to be tonight, so I can't tell you, council. I would hope that you'd appropriate fifty thousand dollars for that, I, I don't know that yet. But I just want you to know that I do see a couple of these things on the horizon, just to let you know they're out there. So, if I can summarize what my request to you tonight is, my, my summary would be that, that one of the things we do is pay back the five hundred thousand dollars. The second is that we explore a better revenue-sharing opportunity with SafeBilt, and we potentially bring the window permit tech position in-house at a revenue benefit to the City of Milton. The third and fourth are that we explore a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, which would account for two vehicles, a pool vehicle, as well as one of the fire department. And finally, if you're so inclined to want to start to fund a vehicle replacement reserve now as opposed to at the beginning of the next fiscal year, my request would be that you look at funding that in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I would then recommend that the rest of the money go to reserves.
And Chris, you did not want to give us an estimate yet for number two, correct?
For the, uh, the permit tech?
Yes, sir.
I, I...
You don't need, I just, I had heard you say earlier that you didn't want to disclose this.
Oh, yeah, I don't, well, the, the number I don't want to tell you is I don't want to tell you where my break-even point is on revenues.
No, no, that's fine, but I didn't know if you knew, if on the cost side of things, if you wanted to share with us what you were looking at. And if not tonight, just do it to us.
Yeah, let me send it to you. Yeah, let me send it to you.
That's fine, just so we can put in some sort of perspective.
I want to, I want to get the deal closed before...
That's fine. That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Roads. I know we were not... Roads, we were not able to fully find the pavement based on the tenure plan that had been laid out for us. I'm trying to remember exactly how short we were, and do we need to allocate some for that, or is it... We're running out of time to do that. It'll be in next year. Because I don't, I don't want us to get further behind on the pavement.
It'll be in next year's budget request. I think the pavement management plan, I talked about, about $2.25 million per year. We're at about $1.9 million funded for last year, and really, at this point in the year, that's about all we can do internally.
So we may know that for next year, we may need to do more than the 2.2 to get us caught back up, or else we'll just be extending it out a little further?
It's possible. We're hoping that a lot of the patching that we're doing right now will hold some of those roads over for a couple of years, so we'll evaluate that at budget time based on the pavement management plan, where we are and what roads are up for this coming year.
I just don't want us to get further behind to the point that it costs us more money because we're not taking care of them when they need to be taken care of.
Yes, ma'am. I think we have what we can spend this year.
Carter and I talked about that at staff meeting on Thursday. I said, "Look, you know, we could potentially ask the council to put more money in pavement management mid-year. We got it if we want to put it in there." But that was the direct question was, even if we appropriate more money now, and we don't, now versus four months from now, are you going to be able to do any more work in the next four months if I give you more money? And we probably have the money that we need to get us through at least October.
Only so much capacity. A quick question as it relates to gravel roads. Without looking back, I think we're about $180,000 that's been expended, and I know that we were going a new route, having somebody that locally had managed those gravel roads historically. That seems to be working well. I just wondered if you could give us a quick update on that, Carter? Is that your perspective, that it's going well in terms of the mixture?
The fact that I haven't got any complaints this year in the indicator. I haven't had anybody say it looks great, but I haven't had anybody say it looks horrible.
And even with the weather, and even though we've, it's obviously been a little bit dry lately, but it would seem that even with some of these bad storms that we've had that they've held...
We've done one grading under the new program, and we're very happy with the way that it went, what it cost. Obviously, the repair of the gravel roads was rolled into the lump sum cost under the CH contract, so I don't really have anything to compare it directly to. But we were very satisfied with the way that it went the first time.
Terrific. And if I'm not mistaken, that's, we're utilizing somebody that historically managed those before we were a city, who did a great job historically and is continuing to do so.
Yes, ma'am. Terry Temples took care of the road for years, and we brought him on as a part-time.
Knows our gravel roads.
Very familiar with them.
And in terms of the mixture that's being utilized, I'm assuming that you guys are monitoring that closely between him being out there every day and you. I know historically, we talked about whether or not, talking to Fulton County about the mixture so that we can avoid any of those problems that we had on next road.
Mixture as in the material that's actually going down on the road?
Yes, just so that we don't incur...
It's the same that Terry purchased in years past.
Terrific. I think that's what we had talked about, so that seems to be the cure. Good. Thank you.
Karen?
One more question. I know we're working to get the little bit of revenue that comes in from the south tower behind the fire station. Is that in our revenue budget anywhere?
It's not yet, but it has been agreed to finally. So what we're working with Fulton County right now is whether or not we are going to receive a direct refund from Fulton County, or whether Fulton County is going to refund the lease fee, and then they will pay us directly. Although our numbers aren't hard, we anticipate back to revenues at somewhere between $15,000 and $18,000 per year for two and a half years. So we anticipate an additional 50 plus or minus $1,000. That's good.
And that's not in, we're in here?
It's not. It was agreed to in principle last week. We're now crafting legal language around making the principle agreement become a legally binding agreement, and we have to, six and one, half and a half, I don't care who sends us the money, just somebody send us a check, so.
Good.
Anything else? Those are our, those are our staff requests. Certainly, if anybody else has anything where they say, you know, "Chris, I think I disagree with you," I'm either looking for, "Chris, I disagree with you," or, "Chris, you forgot." And that's, or, over the next, well, I guess we need to discuss what we're, when this will come back again. But let's talk about, you know, "Chris, I disagree with you," or "Chris, you forgot" first.
The only thing I'd say, Chris, is anytime you have an opportunity to change personnel and positively impact revenue, I think that's a good idea. So to me, that doesn't, that's not consistent with everything else that you're asking for, so that would be something that we should always consider, regardless of what our budget status is.
And I'll ask this question of Carter, and as we look at the Birmingham-Providence intersection, obviously coming north on 372, just knowing this is one of our worst, if not the worst, intersection in terms of public safety and lives. I know in the past, prior to you being here, we had talked about whether or not some sort of temporary mechanism might help notify those who are less familiar with those roads as to that intersection before they get there, whether that be a flashing light. You know, there's some things over in, off of Bowen Road, as an example, but when you start to approach a dangerous intersection, it identifies that there's an oncoming vehicle, and it'll start to flash to help people be aware. So I would just ask if that be at least re-reviewed? I think it was a very low cost, relatively speaking, and we still have a few years before that intersection's going to be improved, and I just wonder if we couldn't save a few lives if we had some temporary mechanisms out there, like a flashing light that just says, you know, warning, slow down. And there's a 35-mile posting out there, but I don't know that people pay as much attention to it as they would if it were to give some sort of visual... So I just, and there may be other things out there that you might be more aware of, but I know that that continues to be a concern for so many people.
Well, we can certainly evaluate those with GDOT. They would be subject to their approval. It would be subject to their approval, and it would be at the cost of the city. It would not be something that they would allow to be rolled into those projects.
And I realize that, but at this mid-year budget time, especially if the costs are relatively low, if we can save one life, it's probably worth it. So just a thought, and I know that we don't know those answers, but I know we had started to look into it historically, and I think because we were still unclear what we were going to do with the intersection, what the timing was going to be, we may not have continued that evaluation.
We'll certainly evaluate that.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next steps with this budget is that after tonight's workshop, we will take what we have tonight, clean it up one more time. I'm going to try my best to get it to... Stacy's going to try her best to... We'll get it out to you. Do you think we can do Wednesday? We'll clean it up tomorrow. We'll get it to you Wednesday morning, and that way you'll have a look at it. And it is scheduled for one week from tonight for an additional public hearing, as well as then a vote, and it will be then up to the council. If that's, if that's what you want to do, that's when it'll be back in front of you. But I'd like to get you something by Wednesday, so at least we'll give you a couple of days before next Monday to look at it one more time and make sure that nothing new comes up.
One question, Mayor. Depending on what ends up in that contingency fund, as opportunities might arise, facing some of the things that we've all talked about, acquisition of land, et cetera, as those opportunities were to present themselves, what would be the process for us to then vote and discuss as a group to identify or utilize some of those?
Sure. You all, as a council, since you're the ones that approve the budget, you have the authority to amend the budget. And if something comes up that you want contingent, that we earmark contingency, that's why I want to keep it. It's just as clean as we can keep it, to basically say, you know, "Mid-year, we recognize that now was not the right time to figure out all the little pennies, but as a council, you absolutely have the authority that if something, if you want to fund something and there's a majority of the council that will support it, we can move a budget amendment out of contingency to wherever the appropriate line item is."
And I just want to remind you that both Bill and I will not be here Monday. I think he leaves tomorrow. I leave Wednesday, so neither one of us will have a chance to get any comments of any revision prior to Monday nights. Karen.
Okay. Okay.
Can we confirm that Friday's meeting at 4:30? It's a special-called meeting, but knowing that we have to have a quorum, you know, I'll be here.
Yes, Friday, Friday.
So we do have a quorum for Friday.
Alan, yes. Joe, yes. Julie, yes.
I don't know if we get four. I mean, if we can't get four, I'll make an effort to be here.
Are you, are you going to be here?
Okay. I mean, I probably will be here, but...
Okay, so we do, I just wanted to make sure we had a police report.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Do you know at least two of us will be here.
That's all I was asking.
We need a quorum. Okay. Is Bill?
He's not there.
Bill's feeling well. Bill went home. He's got the same cold I've got. He might have given it to me. Now I know where I got it. Been dragging all day.